Peg, can you hear me?
Yep, we're about to start.
Hi Peg.
We're about to start.
Hi.
Thanks. Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 6th, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. As always, we thank East Hampton Media for all of their hard work in bringing these meetings to you. All counselors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely under an executive order by Governor Baker, which has been extended to April 2022, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak or if you are speaking during the public hearings. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
President.
Erica Flood. Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
And Owen Zerrit.
Present.
And will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd?
So move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes of September 22nd. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak. Dan Rist.
Epstein.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
And Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved. It is now time for public speak. For those who would like to participate in public speak on any topic other than what is in the public hearings, please remember that the city council may only listen to your comments, but we cannot respond. We ask that you remain respectful and direct your comments only to the city council. There is an icon at the bottom of Zoom called Reactions. Under that, you can raise your hand and we will call on you in the order in which you have raised your hand and you will have three minutes to speak. So, and we have a public hearing at 6:15. If we have enough speakers, then we will move, we will continue after the public hearing. All right. Cindy Mohica, go ahead.
Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. I'm here just to announce, make an announce from the East Hampton High School Heritage. We're celebrating Hispanic heritage and this coming Tuesday, we're going to celebrate our local heroes and that include Senator Anna Gomez, Senator Sonia Chan Diaz, State Representative Carlos Gonzalez, our local East Hampton City Council Omar Gomez, Javier Luengo Carrillo from ACLU Officers from Isanto Police Department, both of them are Puerto Rican, Maria Moreno, business owner, and Dr. Luis Valdez from UMass. So inviting all of the public in Tuesday, October 12, 5 to 7, and the panel will start 5:30 to 6:15. The students will have questions for them and that has been actually pre-made at the Diversity Leadership Club. All the students have made all these questions at East Hampton High School. This will happen in Hampton High School, the auditorium.
And Cindy, is that, it says, is it, it's live in the auditorium or is it a Zoom?
Live. Not Zoom. It's going to be live. We are required that everyone brings a mask and just same requires in building that we have in place in the, all the buildings here in East Hampton.
Okay, great. Counselor Kuzinski.
Thank you. May I ask a question about this? Of...
Sure, if it's about that informational for the public.
Normally, we don't interact with anyone during public speak, so I was asking for your permission.
If it's, yeah, if it's informational for the public, sure.
Thank you. Will there be any chance of having a Zoom join for the event for those who would like to do so? Is that something that could be looked into? If so, I would advocate for that.
Not at this time. We can offer that, not at this time.
Okay, thanks Cindy. Anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment now? Liz.
Hi, I'm sorry, is this public speak? I jointly, or are we not on public speak now?
We are on public speak.
Okay, I would like to speak then, please.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Liz. I live in in Ward 3, Tom Peak's Ward, and I would just like to read the statement that I wrote. I'm a bit concerned that the city council is looking to extend the review of the Public Safety Committee's review of the Mayor's Pledge to reimagine policing. I saw that you were doing that, extending it in the notes. The Mayor's Pledge has been made available since April 1st of this year and I would have hoped that it would have been considered a priority by this council and the Public Safety Committee, especially with elections approaching. It would have been beneficial to the voters to know where their counselors stood on the issue of policing in this town. I hope that each counselor will make time to make it a priority in the reelection campaign. I did read Counselor Zerret's proposed amendments to recommendation number four, and quite frankly, I'm a little startled as to how tone deaf they are. Recommendation number four clearly states that a community-led engagements are what is needed, specifically noting that police-led engagements such as coffee with a cop are not effective in facilitating a better trust and understanding with police and the community they serve. Yet the counselor's recommendations are to continue with such liaisons. He even suggests that the Police Department hold a citizens academy with the supposed purpose to connect the citizens with the policies and the procedures of the Police Department. When recommendation for the Mayor's Pledge to reimagine policing states that what is needed to create a mechanism for East Hampton community is to be part of a public safety decision-making process. So in other words, that the community should come together to be part of the process-making decisions and not to be trained as to what the police do. So when the council does find time to review the report regarding the Mayor's Pledge to reimagine policing, I hope that these recommendations are shot down. Thank you.
Thanks Liz. Anyone else for public speak? Don Torre. Don, you're on mute.
This is my first time on Zoom. Are you hearing me?
Yes, now we can hear you, Don.
Okay, I have a lot of questions on the Honeywell project. From what I've read, it's going to end up being a minus $191, $191,000 per year for, for having this project. Is that correct?
Don, during public speak, we don't engage with...
Well, from what I've read, it's going to be a minus $191,000 for this project and I don't know any homeowner that would take on a project that would end up with a net minus for, for what you're doing. I, I would be more inclined to seeing a solar field out on the property on Park Street that the city owns. I believe there's 13 acres there and the current project is, looks like it's the most costly for the canopy behind the safety complex. So it is my opinion that I would not support this at all. I guess that's my only comment on that. The other comment I have is, why isn't there antibody testing for the school kids? We have two or $3 million from COVID and I think that testing the, the kids that may have already had the virus, had not even known it, would be better than just giving them shots. And I think the money should be going to testing them and letting the parents decide. If they already have antibodies in them, then forget the shot. Those are the two that I have for now and thank you for listening to me. I'm also running for mayor as a write-in candidate. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don. Anyone else would like public speak? Okay, we're a little bit ahead of the public hearing, so we can move into communication from elected officials, boards, and committees. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment there? Counselor Zerret.
Thank you, President Coniff. Just quickly, as everyone's aware, this coming Monday is a holiday that was formerly known as Indigenous Peoples' Day and the city council voted unanimously to replace it. Wait, I'm sorry, formerly known as Columbus Day and the city council voted unanimously to replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. I am grateful for the support of the council. There was concerted effort to try to bring a celebration observance here to East Hampton, but fortunately, because this is happening so much across the state, a lot of the resources have been directed elsewhere. There's a huge celebration going on in Newton and I have an email I could send out with other celebrations. One I'm just going to announce now and then I'm going to turn it over to some of my other colleagues is there is a celebration in Holyoke this Saturday at Carlos Vega Park in South Holyoke at 11:30 and obviously, East Hampton residents and municipal stakeholders and representatives are invited to join. I was going to turn it over now to my colleague Omar Gomez to speak a little bit about the transition from Columbus Day and the importance of removing that holiday. And then I'd like also to invite my colleague Salem Derby, who is an indigenous person, to speak a little bit about the land that we're on now.
Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Owen. First, in six days, it's going to be 529 years that Christopher Columbus arrived to the Caribbean. 529 years, the, that day start the end of the era of the Taínos. Taínos suffer really bad from Christopher Columbus and they exterminate the Taínos in the, in the Caribbean. But just to recognize the Taínos, I just want to say a few words that they, that we still use as a part of our language, including English, that that's the beauty of the, of the Taínos language, right? One of the, one of those, one of those words is hurricane, that came from the Taínos. And just to talk a little bit about it, because I get excited, right? Because I have some of that blood in my blood, because Puerto Rican, they're a mix of three races, black, white, and Taínos, is that when they draw the hurricane and cave and rocks and everywhere, they draw the hurricane exactly the same way that we still drawing there. They knew how the, the winds are coming from and, and the circle exactly where we still doing it. They, the hammock is from Amaca, that came from, from the Taínos. The papaya, the fruit, it came from the Taínos. The Iguana, it came from the Taínos. And I can keep going because the, it's, it's a few more words that we still using it. But for me, it's really important that, that we change that and I'm really glad that the state is touching these holiday and changing the name because definitely Christopher Columbus, they didn't do anything good to the Americas.
Thank you. Counselor Derby, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, and if, and I'm hoping that we have time. Is okay if we, this, this reading might go a minute or two over. Is that okay? I'll try to keep it.
Counselor Gomez didn't use all his three minutes, so.
Okay. So as some of you may know, I am a member of the Wampanoag Tribe of Aquina, which is on Martha's Vineyard, and I think it's important for us, especially at this time, to recognize the other tribes that are in our area. And so we, I have a land acknowledgement and I will say that this was put together by Rhonda Anderson, Margaret M. Burchak, Laurel Davis Delano, Lisa Brooks, and the Native Land Digital. And so this is a land acknowledgement for the Middle River Connecticut Valley. I want to recognize that this land that I am a guest on and this land that I am benefiting from is a territory of the Sokoki Abenaki, part of the Wabanaki Confederacy, the Potomac, the Nanituck, the Nipmunk, and the Agawam. Sokoki means people who go their own way. Sokoki are still here and are a state-recognized tribe in southern Vermont. Pokumtuk is a Mohican Pokumtuk word that roughly translates to people of the Narrow Swift River or people of the swift, clear stream, meaning the Deerfield River. The Potomc are not gone. They're absorbed in their kin of Mohican, Abenaki, and Nipmunk peoples. Nipmunk means people of the freshwater and they are a state-recognized tribe in Massachusetts. The Nipmunk Nation has a reservation in central Mass that has never been out of tribal hands. The Nanituck means the Oxbow part of the Connecticut River and local kin also absorb the Nanituck. Agawam roughly translates to low marshing lands, the present-day Springfield area of the Connecticut River Valley. We are in the watershed of the Cointua River or Connecticut River. Cointua means long-titled river. It is important to remember that while indigenous communities have lived, gathered, farmed, hunted, and fished in the area for thousands of years, they are still here. In addition, I want to recognize the valley's many neighbors, indigenous nations who survive and still exercise sovereignty, the Nipmunk Nation, the Chabunagunkamog, Nipmunk, the Massachusetts at Ponkapog to the east, the Aquina Wampanoag, the Chapoquiddic Wampanoag, the Herring Pond Wampanoag, the Mashpee Wampanoag, the Seekonk Wampanoag, and the Narragansett to the south, the Mohican, the Eastern Pequot, the Mashentucket Pequot to the south, the Stockbridge Munshi Mohican to the west. Mohican translates to people of the waters that are never still, meaning the Hudson River. War, genocide, dispossession, and colonization pushed the Mohican Stockbridge and Munsey tribes west in the late 1700s through the 1800s to Wisconsin, where they have a reservation today, and Minomi Territory. The Mohican tribe has an office in Williamstown, New York and land in Troy, New York to maintain their local ties, the Abenaki Nation of Missequai, St. Francis Sokoki Band, and Noolhigan Abenaki to the north. We respect the sovereignty of these and hundreds of other indigenous nations that survive today and we pledge to support the rights of these nations and interests of indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Counselor Gomez.
Just less than a minute. Thank you, Madam President. On October 16, 11:00 AM, the Worcester Red Sox, Woo Sox are coming to town to do a clinic to the youth and the kids. It's from 8 to 17 years old and on the park at the hub that we call the hub is where that we have the two baseball field and two softball fields. They're going to bring the mascot, so the kid's going to take picture with them. I have to say thank you to the mayor for making this connection between me and them. And again, it's going to be October 16 and another party 11:00 AM. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll take a motion to open the public hearings.
So move.
Second.
Motion second over the public hearings. Any discussion? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak. Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye. Okay, public hearings are now open. We have some appropriations, a transfer, and some other discussions. We'll start with Counselor Rist for finance and the supplemental appropriations.
I would gladly do so, but I was absent, so I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Gomez.
All right, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, counselors. So the first appropriation is going to be for for matching $19,000 for the AFG grant to replace all outdated hoses and nozzles as well as purchase a hose rack to keep the spare hose on. The, at the Finance Committee, we vote to, to approve this request. The AFG is Assistant Fireman Grant and the last time that we replaced that equipment, I think it was 1987. This equipment is, lasts for 20 years and is outdated. And if we want to keep our city safe, I think it's time to buy it. And by the way, we only going to, going to, if we approve it, it's going to be almost $5,000 and the total cost is $19,000. So we have the fire chief here, with the permission of the president of the council, I will allow him to add anything else if he want to.
Sure. Chief Norris.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Counselor Gomez, for that. As Counselor Gomez alluded to back a year ago when we conducted an initial needs analysis of the department, one of the primary things that rose to the top was the need to replace a bunch of fire hose. The hose that's being replaced was manufactured in 1977. And with that, when we looked at some of the national standards, basically, anything manufactured prior to 1987 is supposed to be taken on a service. So with that, we generated a federal homeland security grant. That grant was awarded to us about two months ago. And again, this is that matching amount to go towards that grant to replace that hose.
Okay. Do any counselors have any questions of Chief Norris? Does anyone from the public have any questions or have any, I'm sorry, any comments regarding this appropriation? Okay. Counselor Gomez.
I moved that the city appropriated the sum of $4,900 from cannabis stabilization to equipment to fund the required match of $19,000 AFG grant to replace all outdated hose and nozzle as well as purchase a hose rack to keep the spare hose on.
Second.
Motion second to approve the appropriation for the new fire hose. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak. Dan Rist.
Yeah.
Wendy Ross, Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zerret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
So the second appropriation is, came from the cannabis stabilization funds too. That, by the way, that's, that's what is for, one of the reason that we have this money from cannabis to use it for this kind of equipment is to buy a new ambulance. The fire chief filed a grant and they approve it. The ambulance will cost $261,904 and since we have, I'm pretty sure we have an ambulance that is more than, they have more than 100,000 miles. And the second one, there's the new, newest ones, there's the day number one, we're, we're having some, a lot of mechanical trouble and is, is a time to replace it. Again, we have the fire chief here that he can add anything else of any of the council having a question to him.
Chief Norris?
Again, thank you. So again, as part of that needs analysis, we also looked at, in addition to the equipment, the vehicles, and certainly the two things that rose to the top were the need to replace two of our ambulances. Those two ambulances both have over 100,000 miles on them. This grant was written to replace our oldest one with the most mileage, which was, the vehicle itself is a 2010 and the actual body itself was remounted at that time. The body for this vehicle is actually manufactured in 2000. So you can imagine some of the changes in safety and design and technologies over the past 21 years. The grant was written and was awarded to us for a sum of $275,000 and this $13,000 is that match that will go towards the $261,000 that will be federal monies.
And to, to add a little bit more, and if I remember well, we're going to use the structures and all the equipment for the old ambulance to the new ambulance, right?
Yes, that is correct. We recently made some modifications to it and all of that equipment is able to be transferred over to this new vehicle to be used on, on that when it comes in.
Thank you.
Anyone from the council who has any comments or questions of the chief? Counselor Zerret.
Just quickly, and you can tell me if it's not germane to this, to this conversation, President. How far behind chief are we with the other? You said we have two that are over 100,000. How far behind are we looking at having to replace that?
So what you'll see later on tonight is another appropriation request for replacing that second one. And really, by purchasing, what we did is by purchasing these two at the same time, at least that request to purchase two at the same time, is trying to leverage that purchase in volume, thereby saving the city additional funds, purchasing two at the same time, along with this grant award as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions of the chief? Anyone of the public who has any comments? Okay, Counselor Gomez.
I moved that the city appropriated the sum of $13,955 with 24 cents for the cannabis stabilization to the FEMA AFG new ambulance. This one will be used as part of the required match for federal grant in the amount of $261,904 for the purchase of a new ambulance.
Second.
Motion second for appropriation for the grant match for new ambulance? Any further discussion? Counselor Peak.
I'm going to vote for this, but I, it just occurred to me right now. I have no, what is the balance right now on the cannabis stabilization fund?
Jen, City Treasurer Jen Glot, do you know that answer? I think you're here. Hi Jen, sorry to take you off guard, Jen, sorry.
No, that's okay. Yes, I am here and I, if you give me one second, can tell you that amount.
Well, if you, I mean, if it's quick, sure, otherwise, if you want to.
I'll pipe back in when I, when I, when I get it, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Do you, let me back up. Counselor Peak, do you want to know that before we vote?
It won't change my vote. It's just the sort of thing that I like to keep track of. I realize that I've not done so on, on, in this particular case.
Okay. All right. If anybody would like to pause before we vote until Jen can get that number, otherwise I will take a motion, or we have a motion. We can vote now unless, okay, let's vote. Barbara.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yeah.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zerret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. I know, I was having trouble with my mouse.
Okay. Uh, motion passes. Next up, Counselor Gomez.
Yes, the third one is going to be $49,586.25 to transfer for the PEG access receipt reserve account to be used to the cable-related expenses. Probably Counselor President can add more than me because she was part of the East Hampton Media. Well, basically, this is to pay the bills that we had, that we have to transfer the, this money to East Hampton Media, that way they can pay the bills.
Right.
The way they did in the past.
Right, so we, our, our contract with the cable company requires that for the number of subscribers that they pay us for PEG access, a dollar amount per subscriber. That money comes into the city and goes into an account. Quarterly, I believe, we take that money out and we send it over to East Hampton Media into their, we write a check basically and send it over to them and it is this money that East Hampton Media runs all of the programs that they do throughout the year. So quarterly, roughly, they get $50,000 from the cable. So it goes, the city is essentially a pastor. So that's what this appropriation and transfer is for. Any questions from anyone on the council? Any comments from anyone from the public? Okay, Counselor Gomez.
Okay. I moved that the city appropriated the sum of $49,586.25 from the PEG access account to the PEG access account to give, approve, to spend from the PEG access receipt reserve account for cable-related consistent with franchise agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the interdepartmental transfer. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerret.
Owen.
Owen.
Sorry, aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski. JP Kuzinski?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Jen, I see your hand up. Do you have the number for us?
Yes, I do. Um, so after the two hundred ninety-eight thousand and the ninety-seven thousand that are for this public hearing, we're looking at a balance of eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in the cannabis stabilization account.
Okay. More, Jen, hang on. Jen, is that effective as receipts from up to what date?
Um, that is effective only of receipts through June thirtieth.
Okay.
Because we, I haven't gotten the September thirtieth statement yet.
Okay, so do you get them quarterly?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, Councilor Rist?
I assume you meant the appropriation that's up to be, that's a new business for the second ambulance?
No?
No.
We're talking about the balance of cannabis that Council.
I understand, but you said two hundred ninety-eight thousand?
I was talking about, I was just looking at the agenda.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, that's what I was talking about. On the agenda, there is.
Oh, okay.
That hasn't been approved yet, but it would be.
Approved in two weeks.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Did I see any other hands from any of the other counselors? Okay, all right. So that concludes the appropriation and interdepartmental transfer portion of the public hearings. We're now going to talk about the Public Safety Committee's report on the mayor's pledge to reimagining policing. Councilor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. Me again. I want to start saying that that this report, the, I was part of the group, the original group that the mayor appointed. And as a city councilor, this was my priority. It was, and it still is. Something didn't look like that way because when it's something that is so serious and is, is huge, we had to take time to do a good job. After saying that, I want to read the introduction. As a member of the Public Safety Committee of the East Hampton City Council, we were, we were charged to review the mayor's pledge work group recommendation and hear testimony from the public and those who were involved with its creation. The mayor's pledge created by Brothers Keeper under the Obama Foundation was signed by the Mayor Nicholas Chappell on June third, twenty twenty. The reimagined policing pledge is a call for the mayor and local officials to review and reform use of forced police, redefine public safety and combat systematic racism within law enforcement. Systematic racism is not unique to the police department. I'm gonna say that again. Systematic racism is not unique to the police department. We're still living in the aftermath of the evils of slavery and segregation where public policies, institutional practices, cultural representation and other norms were in virus, often reinforcing ways to perpetuate racial group indicating. Systematic racism is not something that is, that a few people or institution necessarily choose to practice. And I'm gonna repeat that again. Systematic racism is not something that a few people or institution necessarily choose to practice. Rather, it has been a feature of the social, economic and political system in which well, all exist. The first step to this, this dismantling racism is to acknowledge that they're exist. We're grateful to all of committee members who came forward to give the public testimony. It is clear that the members of the public feel divided on this topic of policy. This is no surprise as the national landscape does support this report in highly charged and violent, violent deal. A rightly so. An extreme ends were assumption that all police are bad and that any change in the police's scrutiny of the East Hampton Police Department is an attack of the police. It's also became clear that there is not enough data and sharing of data to have substantive conversation around areas of bias, police oversight, or police, policy changes. Many, many members of the public, the police and those involved in the conversation expressed that if we really want to do and be better, we need to be collaborative. We need to begin to understand our neighbors' perspective and we move forward as a community to actually solve the issues that we face in East Hampton. The city of East Hampton has the opportunity to be proactive in working with it, with our police department to create more transparency around data, practices and oversight in the efforts to build trust with the, with the community and work toward eliminating bias. As a member of the Public Safety Committee, we're in an advisory role and can affirm and recommend action and policies that is, that in that capacity, we would like highly the recommendation that we feel are most relevant and impactful as well as recommended action steps. And then we have the recommendation that I don't know if, Madam President, you want me to go one by one because it's, 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 it's a long document. I sent that a couple of weeks ago to every single council. They have enough time to review it. And I'm open, and I, I'm open to, to, to receive questions. And I'm open to let the other council from the public safety to answer if they feel they have to.
Councilor Gomez, I would like, for the, for the purpose of the public, I would like you to, at the very least, walk through, just tell us what the recommendations are in the order that you have. We don't need to go through all the action steps, but if you could say, you know, the number one priority is this, what it is, and then two, three and four, and then we can go from there.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilor, hang on. Councilor Kuzinski?
I was wondering if it's at all possible, a visual of the report or of the action steps so that in addition to the verbal report, we'd have something that folks could look at?
Can you? Do we need somebody to share it?
Allow me, Madam President.
Please.
Thank you, because I have it in paper.
And Councilor Gomez, just while he's doing that, I see the very first one says recommendation two. Did you have them in a different order and you moved that one to the front, or is that a typo?
No, it's not a typo. While we find out, and the committee is the, the recommendation two for the original report, I think we should be number one. That should be the priority.
Okay.
You want me to keep on?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that they weren't out of order or typo. Um, Councilor Rist, can you just scroll the page before it is what we need to start with?
Oh, got it. Sorry.
Right there.
My apologies.
No worries. Okay.
So yeah.
So go ahead. If you just want to just read the headline.
Yes, I'm going to try. I'm going to try to do that. You know that I love to talk. So yes, what we believe as, as a committee is that we should start with the data, with the data collection, analysis and, and regular reporting. For the committee, I think it's really important for us to start with that because data, it shows how the department is working, right? And that's what we put in number one instead of having something else. And when we have some recommendation, like they sent the police department, join the police foundation, police dating initiative and being a party chief with the Westfield State University Criminal Justice Department that I think we can create a relationship, a really good relationship with them and probably can save some money there to the constituents. But basically, that's the idea behind it. That's what we say, we put number one, that recommendation, the data, because data will show and guide us to the right direction. I'm just waiting because I don't know if you want to let.
Can you scroll then?
Lindsey has her hand up, Madam President.
Oh, can we just get through this first and then we can come back for commentary?
Okay.
Yep. I just want to get through these four things. We don't have to talk about them yet. Just what are they?
Yes, okay. So that was the recommendation two, that is going to be number one. And recommendation number one, that is going to be recommendation number two from us, is to invest in community-led, non-police responding health and safety concerns, right? And I know that the police department now have a CSO as a kind of part-time, which we share with, with another town. But what we want is to, the police department to engage and invest in more of that. That's recommendation number two, community assessment of new resources, engage with the Board of Health that I hope we approve next time, a new position that probably is going to respond to the, that we talk at the Finance Committee, that's how we approve it. I hope we have a new position that, that we can work with someone that also have a gun to respond to to a lot of cases like mental health, drug addiction, domestic violence and related incidents. So that's going to be our recommendation number two. Recommendation number three, strengthening oversight and we recommend that, that the step, like a creative independent review committee to, to receive investigative complaints, identify our turn in a city department to receive investigative complaints and hire independent civilian investigators. So what we want is to create more a department most transparent, most transparent and more, more accountable to, to the, to the constituents. And we want to that, that's what the recommendation creates, an entity that is dependent, that is going to be independent to review the, the complaints to the police department. That I, that I, that probably some of the recommendation being covered with the new reforms is possible. But when the new reform was coming to be in place, we've been working at the same time with this recommendation. So if probably Officer Gribby is going to be here or, or the police chief is going to be here, probably they're going to say that we already covered that is because the the reform, the policy reform is going to be, was at the same time, the state level where we were working on this. Recommendation number four, engage in intentional regular communication and collaboration with the community to understand and codify safety needs and develop response, right? A community engaged process, again, data needs, analysis. Most of the time came, came to the data. We want to create, and this recommendation, what we want to do is create an open data team compromise of the community residents, police administration and city council member to work together with, again, example, like a Westfield State Criminal Justice. And recommendation number five, examine police culture and training. We want to work with the, invite member of the impacted, impacted communities to design police training curriculum, adult, adult policies prohibiting by officer or recruiting found to have been associated with white supremacists or hate of group from remaining, remain or being hired by the Southampton Police Department. And recommendation number six, and I jumped one, I'm pretty sure it's recommendation number four, that we want the police, the police department to come to the, to the Public Safety Committee to give us report quarterly. Report how, how, how many terms they're taking, all the, all the information, the, the committee, they need to feel safe that the police are being well-equipped and trained. And we're going to invite them to do so, the police safety. And then, and the last one, educate and inform the Southampton community about revised, revised with the force of police, of policy. Develop an accessible, one-page summary of changes to use a force policy and history widely to the community and post, I don't know how to say that in English. I don't know how to pronounce that. I'm sorry, on the website. So as basically to be more engaged and be more transparent to the, to the community. Any question?
So I think, first, let me go to Councilor Rothschild. She's had her hand up for a bit. So Councilor Rothschild?
Hi, I just wanted to add on to what Councilor Gomez has said. I wanted to say that I've already, and it's, it's in the packet, and just for members of public that might not see it. I've already had some ongoing conversations with Dr. Lisa Barrow. She's a criminal justice professor at Westfield State. And she authored a huge study on the climate of policing in Hartford. It wasn't a relationship with the community so much as relation, climate within their workplace. But I spoke to her about building some kind of sustainable relationship with our town that was mutually beneficial to us learning, collecting data and sharing it, and also to their student body. And they are really excited, Westfield State, to work with us and followed up with a letter of intent. And so I think this is just a really great opportunity to learn more and share data. So from that, in our committee, we just talked about so many of these recommendations come, really are based on data. So any kind of policy changes or any kind of, you know, building like real dialogue with residents and police together needs to revolve around asking questions together, coming up with research questions, coming up what we, what we want to know, what, what means, what does safety mean in a community? How do, do people experience policing? And come up with these questions together and, you know, do research together and, and approach it with openness and discovery. So and then action as a result. So that, I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Rothschild. Any, so I don't know how the council would like to go through this. If you'd like to go one by one and really do a deep dive into each scenario, or if you just want to ask questions of Officer Gribby, actually, sorry, Officer Gribby, I don't know if you're an officer or a sergeant or a captain, so.
Sergeant.
Sergeant. Let's make sure we get that right out there.
My name's Kyle.
Hi, Kyle. We'll go with that. So I don't know, councilors, how you want, do you want to hear from Kyle first? Or how do you want to go about this? I'll leave it entirely. I'll follow whatever lead you guys want to do. Councilor Rist?
I just have a question. First of all, Madam President, you want me to leave this up?
Please, yeah.
All right. This oversight, I, I have a question of Councilor Gomez. You indicated that you developed this prior to the post-commission being developed by the state. Am I hearing that right? So it may be redundant to what the state has? I, I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
It, it is possible that it's redundant in, in a few recommendations. Because when we start working on this, the state was working in, on their version of the police reform. And it could be, be redundant in a few, in a few places.
So my, my question is, did you envision any of this, like the review committee or the independent civilian investigator having any authority to do anything? Or are they just making recommendations? I'm not sure what this committee would do. I'd like to hear a little more in depth about what all of this meant if it were to happen.
Lindsey, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I just want to, we don't, this is recommendations that go to the mayor's office. So we don't want to be too limiting in what we're saying. The essence and the intent of this recommendation is that there's a third party that receives and reviews complaints. Because right now, there's not a place besides sending complaints to the body you're complaining about, which doesn't feel, you know, safe. So we just, so that we've given different options of how, what that might look like. And we don't want to be too restrictive. The basic essence that we're recommending to the mayor is that there's an independent review committee. But I don't think at this level, at this point, it still goes to the mayor that we're making such prescriptive, you know, we're not prescribing that, that detail at this level. Basically, we were going through the huge report that was there. There's a lot of great stuff in there and a lot of stuff we want to do. And we were trying to prioritize it and put it into like things that were actionable and prioritize for our city.
So I have a question and I don't know, and I'll get to you in a second, Councilor Peak. So, and I don't know who can answer this, but so if this is just, and I don't want to say just, but if this is a recommendation to the mayor of things that your committee and subsequently the council's affirmation of that that goes to the mayor and says, these are the things and the, the. and the order of the things that we think need to take place. We're not being prescriptive about what you do to achieve these things. How much engagement will we continue to have throughout that process? I mean, conceivably, um, you know, do we want to have any sort of not say, but are we, if we say we think data is the first thing you need to go after? And we have in here the Police Foundation's Police Data Initiative, I don't know what that is. If if the mayor and whoever that mayor will be has a different direction to go get data, we're not saying you have to do it this way. We're saying you just have to do better with data. Is that, is that fair? Or is there some sort of parameters we want to put around this to make sure that all the work you guys did to hear through what the priorities are actually gets taken care of? So I don't know, that may be just commentary, I don't know if there's something to respond to. How do you see this playing out, I guess is my question?
I I think uh, your statement, because I take it like a statement, was more, um, there was a bunch of questions too, right? What what is, what is going to happen after? So it's it's up to the mayor, whoever the mayor is going to be, right? Um, how much engaged we're going to be is, I don't know, that as a uh, elected official is how much we're going to be uh, working with the mayor to see if this is going to happen. That's that's the first one. It's it's up to the mayor, because at the end, this is going to be only recommendation. We don't have the power to tell the mayors, do this first, do this second, or do this third. Why we recommend that at first is because I think we should know exactly what is happening inside. Uh, when I say inside, what happened in the department, I don't want to sound like a, an aggressive way inside. I just want to, we want to know what happened at the department. That way the mayor have a better view of the department and start working with with what is going to be the first, uh, where they find out on the data. I think that's what the data is going to be the first one. It's like a, we want to know what it how much information, how bad is the system, how how about is, how bad or how good is the program? How accurate it is? If it is not accurate, so we have to put money in it in a new system to be more accurate and to have more information for the police department. That's why the data is going to be the number, the number one in our views.
Okay, Council Peak.
I think I just got a lot of my questions cleared up, but just to reiterate for my mental health. What we're basically doing tonight is voting in a very similar way to what we did with the housing production like plan. We are basically voting to accept a report. And in doing so, we are voting to say that we, the council, agree with this report. And doing so, we're also communicating that if the city needs to come to us for resources to make these sort of things happen, we, the council, have signaled that we are in favor of these things. And we'd really like to see them done and 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 but that ultimately, a lot of this stuff is really kind of an executive prerogative. And so a- as such, it's okay if we, like, so when we're talking about the, like, the the state bill, you know, right? The state bill is starting a police oversight committee. And what we are saying is that we want a police oversight committee. And if the mayor finds that what the state's doing will fill that role adequately, then great. And if the way that that goes down, it it doesn't seem like that's the case and that we actually need to look at a municipal or a regional solution, then we encourage that. Am I just, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you're right.
Okay, so I will take this all in that context.
And can I add just a little bit more, Madam President?
Please.
Uh, just for the clarification and just to refresh everybody's head. When the group, the pledge group, um, the major pledge remaining policing group send the report to the mayor, she didn't have to send it to the to to us. Uh, but she sent it to us, uh, the the mayor sent it to us, to us to give us another pair of eyes and to take a look of that report and to have some input from the public in general. And that's what we do at the public safety. We open it to the public, we listen to the public and we priority prioritize what we believe should be the first in that report.
Okay. Thank you for that, Council Gomez. Are there any other councilors who have any questions on this? Councils Eric?
Um, mostly for the sake of the public, but also for my own edification. First of all, I really want to say quickly, um, I really commend all of you for this process and this report. I sat in on a few meetings, watched some others recorded. Uh, this was incredibly difficult and onerous task. Um, there's a lot to take on, you know, in terms of um, trying to be neutral and just receptive to the public feedback here. And um, I think this happened organically and occurred in the time that needed to occur. And so thank you to all the members of the Public Safety Committee. Certainly thank you to members of the public that engaged and then all the other stakeholders that participated. I was, I'm just trying, I was trying to understand while watching the process. Um, and exactly, where exactly, because a lot of these policies are are either executive-driven through mayor, or they actually fall on the police to have to draw up and enact these policies just in the way that a lot of our police policies work now. Where, where during the process and and was it during drafting these recommendations, were, was it done kind of in concert with the police, was it done kind of under advisory with the police? And and do they, at what point is this is this handed to them to make any input or recommendations? Did that happen already? Um, and that's, that's partially for me and also partially for the public. Because I'm trying, I'm also trying to understand the kind of what happens next piece of this. And again, thank you. This is great. I I think this is fantastic. And I especially appreciate the input about the partnership with Westfield State University for a variety of reasons. So that that was a, that was a great, a great idea.
Uh, Council Rothschild?
I mean, I just want to say that the mayor's pledge, first of all, the process with the original committee interfaced with the East Hampton Police Department and the consultant we had, Professor Nicole Hendricks, interfaced with the East Hampton Police Department. Um, we had public hearings where everyone was inviting and people spoke, including people from the East Hampton Police Department. And these, but these recommendations aren't supposed to be drafted with the East Hampton Police Department. The mayor's pledge comes out of a community need to stop systemic racism, and this needs to be community-led and community-driven. So in terms of writing this specific report, no, this is based on community feedback. Um, and I think that's appropriate.
So is it fair, so is it fair, Council Rothschild, that that really the recommendations that are in bold are the key, what you and the committee and the public in feedback that you got helped you prioritize six things that were already in the mayor's pledge? But now we are reprioritizing them a little bit based on your feedback that you got. And then the recommended action steps are just kind of ideas, thoughts and, you know, kind of some ideas out there, but the mayor ultimately will take this report and kind of take whatever action steps he or she, depending on if it's next year, decides to take. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. But I would say these recommendations are exact, are right from the mayor's pledge report. We did, those bold things were authored in the mayor's pledge report.
Right.
What we are trying to do, because there was so much in there and so much great stuff to do, but you know, reality is we need, we want to really, we want something to come out of it. So we just wanted it to be more like, we wanted to put in action steps, like what can I do? Like distill through all the recommendations in the mayor's pledge to like the next steps. That, and it doesn't have to be in order, by the way. This is, we just said data is key, but that doesn't mean don't work on these other topics till you have data, because you can still start working on them. So I think the bullet points are actually where we kind of distilled, where here's an action like we think is realistic that our city can take. We, you know, there's a lot of things in there that would be great to do, but we don't have the resources. We don't have the time, you know, so you just have to pick and choose what you're going to do as a city. So that's how we tried to look at it. And I think whether it's dead and, you know, wanted to give to the mayor if it's dead or not, I think the Public Safety Committee can keep returning it to their agenda, like maybe a quarterly check, like give us a report and how you're doing on our recommendations. And you know, I think there could be some accountability. We don't have power per se, but we have, we can hold people accountable and question them on their actions. So I I would advocate for that.
Right. And and I think somebody mentioned it earlier that this was an ask of the mayor for you to do this, to get feedback.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. All right, um, Desiree, I see your hand up. If you are really Kyle, I can let you speak. If you're Desiree, I'll have to wait a second.
I have my, that's, that's her.
Okay, so hang on Desiree until we open it to the public. Um, Lindsay, your hand's still up, but I assume that's just left over. Any, anyone else from the council have any further questions, comments?
My hand's up.
Okay, let me remind you, Council Kuzinski, I can't see people. I need you, I need you to.
That's why I said something.
I need you, you gotta hit the button, but okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Wanted to thank the committee for all the hard work. I think we're working hard in East Hampton to bring all parties together to assure that we have a a system that works for everyone. A police department that works for everyone. I see that as as critical at this time. And and I guess I would like to be sure that our report dovetails with the state. And I I my my question is, do we, are we satisfied that we can move forward with the presentation to the mayor without further review of the two reports? Bringing together the state's new report and ours. Uh, and I want to especially commend the recommendation for review by the of data. And imagine any other questions that come up quarterly by the Public Safety Committee. Uh, I see that as a role that I think can be very helpful with oversight.
Any other comments from the councilors? Does um, Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to add? If you were, yeah, Mayor.
I'm here.
Did you want to add anything?
Um, just thanks to public safety, but also um, for taking the time. And I I did ask for the additional input. While the mayor's pledge is very lengthy and has a lot of information, the level of public participation as well as the members of that work group changing radically midway through, I thought it was important to get it to other forms of public vetting as well to the city councilors who, I'm I'm not sure who said it, that, uh, yes, it's my report, my recommendations. The the, it's it's my report, I appreciate your recommendations. And what happens next is actually an implementation plan, which indeed could could be asking for some appropriations or other things that I would need that the council's um, approval to do. So it was a lot of time and I know um, a bunch of people from the public attended some, if not all of the uh, hearings that public safety allowed to happen within their committee meeting. I I thank them for that. And I'm really looking forward to hearing um, more comments um, from the other councilors and um, Sergeant Gribby as well as the members of the public on this call, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll be here, obviously, if there are specific questions to to be answered.
Okay, great. Uh, Sergeant Gribby, do you want to weigh in here? I know you were a part of this and um, do you have any additional comments, thoughts?
I can just say, as Council Gomez kind of references, that while all this, I mean, obviously, the last few years, there's been a lot going on and a lot of different, you know, areas. So um, while this was all occurring, there was a lot of changes happening at the same time. So um, I can say the vast majority of the things that are on in these recommendations and in this report are things that are, we already are doing currently. And um, if they're not um, something we've been doing for a while now, it's, we're in the process of implementing these things. So um, I mean, obviously, there are kinks to work out because some of this stuff is new. You know, in a good way, we just need to find the most efficient way to put the, you know, um, put, put things together and present things. And um, but in the end, much of this, the vast majority of this are are things that in the timeframe that we were doing all this um, research and and communication, a lot of it just sort of happened already. You know, organically and through through different avenues, the state being the one that you guys kind of referenced as well.
Um, to the committee that put this together, thank you, Sergeant Gribby, to the committee that put this together. It, is there an opportunity, you know, for us to do kind of a side-by-side, this is what's been done so far? I I'm not necessarily suggesting that you do another, well, maybe I am. But when we talk about the Public Safety Committee and Sergeant Gribby just talked about, there's a lot of stuff that's already been done or in process. I feel like we need some sort of a ongoing update status on some of these things. And I recognize that maybe all these things, the mayor will not necessarily prioritize as things she's going to do. But I feel like on on an ongoing, boy, everybody's hands up. I feel like on an ongoing basis, we need to match what the police department is already working on with these recommendations, so we can see a progress report over time of of where we are. Because like you even said, Council Gomez, some of these things have already kind of worked their way through since this whole committee started. So I'm just going to leave that there. And I saw Council Peak's hand go up first. And now we've.
Yeah, yeah, right there. Um, yeah, uh, it's it's funny, you were saying that, President Coniff, because I I was thinking sort of the same thing. I think that some of that might come from our shared sort of corporate background, but I was like, I need to get this like mapped out, you know, like. Um, so uh, I I was, I was thinking like, one recommend, once, I don't, it doesn't need to be like an amendment to this or anything. If there's the idea of um, of a of a quarterly meeting with the Public Safety Committee, one thing that I I think could be really cool would be if there was some way to to sort of visually map out kind of like where progress has been made so far and, you know, what like, like what's been accomplished, what's in the works, what hasn't started yet, where are the barriers, that kind of thing? Just so that there's a regular chances for the uh, for the council to, you know, uh, for the for the people that aren't on public safety in particular, to kind of know where things are going, what's going well, what might need kind of a nudge in the right direction. So that's just like, uh, sort of really broad vague feedback, but um, you know, take it or leave it, I guess.
Council Rothschild?
Um, yeah, I like the idea also of um, like kind of just quarterly, to keep the mayor's pledge alive. And they, and I, there might be other things that the mayor and her pledge is obligated to do through that, um, signing that pledge. But I would definitely recommend the quarterly visits. And I also want to say like, I think this is a great opportunity. I think East Hampton, um, if we stick to it and really keep visiting it, I'm sorry, there's a plane over me. Um, East Hampton is representative of lots of other communities. We have this, a lot of the same issues. You know, we have a predominantly white town, um, you know, as we said in our letter, this is like the result of segregation. We're still living in this aftermath. And so marginalized communities, we don't understand enough about their experiences, you know? And and there's just been a history, an ugly history of police violence and and for police who, but that doesn't mean individual, you know, that doesn't reflect necessarily an individual police officers in our town. And many, I would say the majority of East Hamptoners have really good relationships with our East Hampton Police Department and rely on them. So I think we're representative of so many towns, but I think what we have that others don't is that, I don't know, we really make things happen here. We can really be innovative. We really, even though we like struggle and hit heads against each other, we really can work through things. And I think if we really keep to this and keep asking questions and work with data and come to it with like an willingness to. and come to it with like a willingness to learn on, and willingness to change, I'm really excited about the opportunity that this brings us. And I really think we could become like a model small town. So that's my optimism.
I like it. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Chairman of the Police Safety, I already have some conversation with the police chief about the quarterly report, and he is really open to do it. So we, we're going to have it, we're going to include it in our agenda. The next meeting, we're going to put in our agenda to have the police at this, and I want to say this for, for everybody, exactly the same that we're doing with the fire department. So we're going to do with the police department too. We're going to have a quarterly report and because it's going to be part of the agenda, the, the councillors, the committees, they're going to allow to ask all these questions that we have, or concerns that we have from the report. So quarterly, we're going to bring to the full city council what is happening to, to, with the police department.
I would also add that I'd like, and I don't know necessarily how you do this, but I would like some sort of feedback loop from the community. So it's one thing to say, hey, we've done A, B, and C. And if the community says, and they're all worthless and we don't agree with them, that's, we can't be patting ourselves on the back for doing things that are not helpful to the community at large, even though we think we've done great things. If, if the community doesn't think that, then, you know, it's not perfect. So, you know, I don't want to try to define it here, but I know that you've got this, Counselor Gomez, and I, I, I feel very confident that you fully understand all of the, the direction that this needs to go. And I appreciate all the hard work. I know it was long, long meetings and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the public for coming and, and being very open. And I, I appreciate the police for attending. And I'm sure it was not comfortable all the time or ever. And I appreciate that they came and they came with an open mind and, and that change and progress will come out of that. So thank you to the committee for doing that. Counselors, Eric.
Thanks, President Coniff. I just wanted to build off of kind of the conversation that's going on about regular reporting to the Public Safety Committee. I think that's a great idea, just in terms of, in the spirit of this report, facilitating ongoing community dialogue as well as transparency and accountability. One thing, and if it's kind of been said already, I apologize, but talking about revisiting these bullet points, and I guess that would also probably happen once the mayor's finished with the report and kind of offers their, their take on this, he or she. Would the Public Safety Committee be then interested in kind of setting a timeline? So the public and the council kind of know what to expect in terms of when you might have ideas about when these points are supposed to be reached, what's happening in three months, what's happening in six months, what's happening in a year? Obviously, that could be fluid. It also kind of speaks to what Counselor Peak was saying before and speaking to President Coniff's background of kind of, you know, project management. And so we also set expectations that way for the community and for the city. It's a thought and maybe a little bit of an ask as well. So that's all.
Okay. Sergeant Kirby.
I just wanted to, I agree with everything you guys are saying. But I, I think one of the things that I personally sort of realized throughout all this is just how much this communication and how important that this can affect change and help us do, in terms of me speaking from the police department's perspective, help us understand how we can better our service and how we can, you know, what the public wants from us and expects from us. So the more we can continue and improve this communication of just us understanding what the public's experience is with our service. And at the same time, the more you guys can understand what it's, how that is looking from our perspective as well. Like you guys see these bullet points. And it's, to make it more real, if you, like, I, it's almost like I just want to invite you to come down to the station and kind of, so I can show you more of what this actually looks like, so that it's not just checking a box on a bullet point. It's, this is what this looks like, this is how we are working it, these are the people that are involved with that. And it might just give you a better feeling as to what these actual bullet points are and not just like a, sort of like you referenced, just a pat on the back for coming up with a good idea, you know? So I just wanted to, anytime you guys want to reach out or anything to me, I will definitely be available to answer any questions. Or if I can, as I said, just kind of introduce you to any of the stuff that you're interested in, I definitely enjoy that.
Great, thank you, Kyle. Okay, anything, anything else from councillors before I ask if anyone from the public has any comments? Nothing further?
Madam President, I'm going to stop the share, if that's all right with you?
Sure, yep. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment? Okay, so Carol, okay, Carolyn Cushing and then Liz. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Hello, Carolyn Cushing, Main Street, Salem's District 4. Um, I, this is a process question. You know, in being in a past city council meeting, this report had a 90-day extension. And a number of us, many of, you can tell from Liz's comments at the beginning, we didn't think this was being discussed and voted on tonight. So, you know, didn't review it with the same amount of attention. You know, it does say in the agenda, 1, 2, 22. I wonder what's happening on 1, 2, 22.
So I'll just explain to you what those numbers mean, but I, I can't really go into anything more than that. So the way, those are, those numbers are when it was introduced, the first number is when it was introduced. The second number, let me look at it real quick, the second number. So when we have something on our agenda, according to, I'm not sure if it's the charter or our rules, we have to address it within a timeframe, 90 days. We have to do something. We either have to do it or we have to extend it. And when we extend it, all that means is we have to do something during that extension. It doesn't mean we do it on the end of that extension. It's just, we now have a new 90 days to continue it. We may in four days after we extend it, say, okay, we got everything now, let's vote. So, so that, those numbers are really kind of an internal way for us to make sure that things are moving and that they don't just die on our agenda. And for the public, the, the, the agenda that comes out on Thursday is, are those things that we are and have decided that we're going to talk to and about in a public setting? And so it was on the agenda in a public hearing so that you all could make comments on it. And, and we, we may vote on it, we may not vote on it. But it's, the public hearing allows us to make our comments and allows you to make your comments. So I don't, I hope that helps.
Yes. And you're saying you may not vote on it. There are some of us who were like, oh, didn't study it quite as much as we would have. So I don't know if that has you put off your vote. I mean, to say there are things that I appreciate hearing tonight about, you know, the, the police coming for the review and the accountability from the council being kind of proactive and following up about that. I, something in particular that I was kind of watching through the process is the peer-led support, which I see it mentioned in the report. I mean, it's like just a, a small line, it's not the big detail. So, but I'm glad that it made it in there, so it can continue to be explored as a non-coercive and very effective in working with people way of dealing with community problems. And also, it's a very, it's a cost-saving, uh, lease and, and Chief Alberdi was writing in the story a little while ago about overtime is such a cost. You know, what are there some ways to address that? So anyway, didn't review it as fully as I would if I was clear on these details. And this kind of, this is an ongoing conversation, me, us, you know, like, oh, how do we help the public figure out, you know, these intricacies of, of your way of working? All right, so thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Liz.
Hi again. Yeah, I also just wanted to kind of like what Carolyn said, also in, in your notes and under, for last meeting, it says, Public Safety, a motion made by Counselor Gomez and seconded by Counselor Derby, it was unanimously voted by rural call to extend the following agenda by, item by 90 days. And under that, it says mayor's pledge to imagine policing reporting, or Matt Player's pledge to reimagine police reporting. And then it also below that said that the Public Safety Committee will meet next on October 19th at 7:00 PM. I, I did find it confusing, I'm sure we're not the only ones. So it's just something that maybe the, this council could keep in mind that perhaps there aren't people here participating that otherwise would be if they had read those notes. And since I'm here, was it, I'm sorry, was it Sergeant Kirby or Captain Kirby?
His name is Sergeant Kyle Kirby.
Sergeant- So something that he had just said that made me think about something that is in the mayor's report, where I know he, he probably said this is the best intentions about coming down to the police station and seeing what this means for the police. And it kind of made me reflect on the part of the mayor's pledge where there was a survey given towards the end, where many of the officers were saying that they just can't do their job if there's groups out there that are trying to, they're police-hating and tying their hands. And I just want to remind everyone that this is reimagining police. This isn't fitting to what police currently are. We're not trying to make, you know, a pledge that is going to meet, that fits the agenda of what police are now. We are looking to reimagine and reinvent what police means to the community. Thanks.
Thanks, Liz. Desiree.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I kind of just wanted to, I guess, add to that also and then also just ask for a little clarification. I attended a lot of the meetings or the meetings that I could get to regarding, obviously, the reimagining and participating. But I just want to kind of clarify, and what do we mean by our community being involved? Because I know there was a comment that was made that, you know, the police shouldn't be involved in this report and shouldn't be involved in this reimagining. But, I mean, they are our community members also. And I mean, obviously, as this meeting is showing, my husband's a sergeant. Does that mean that my voice doesn't count because of his career? I mean, we are all members of the community and need to start working together to better the situation that we're in and work together to figure out what works best for all of us, not exclude people because of their career or exclude people because, you know, they have a different opinion. I mean, we don't need a council that is going to declare, I'm pro-police or I'm against police. We need a council that are going to actually work together and be willing to listen to all sides and make a better decision for our entire community and not just a better decision for themselves. So I just want clarification, I guess, on who's actually going to be involved with these meetings and who does have a voice. And then obviously I did read some of the report. And one of the suggestions is that non, you know, involved committee that's going to be reviewing the complaints or potential complaints that come in. And again, how are you going to decipher who gets to be a part of this? Are there going to be people that are excluded just because who a spouse is or who their partner is? Or, you know, what their job is? We need to have, have everybody involved in our community if that's what we're trying to talk about and that's what we're trying to bring together.
Okay. Desiree, we can't have a back and forth and I think you probably already know that. So, um, thank you for your comments and we'll, you know, we just can't have a back and forth unfortunately with this. Shelby and Donovan.
Hi, Shelby Lee, in Precinct 4. I want to ask that the council consider what they're hearing and postpone this vote the way that the agenda was interpreted by anybody who reads it. And as someone who has been attending the meetings regularly, hearing the discussion as well, the general public interprets that as being postponed until, unless someone, you know, changed their mind. The way, really the date code, I think, is the biggest issue, especially when you acknowledge that it's only understood by the city council. Anyone else who looks at that agenda from the outside says, oh, this is postponed probably until this date. So I think that in the best interest of including all of the voices of the public from all perspectives, as we say we want to do in this reimagining, then it needs to be in a way that the public understands that it's happening to be there to, you know, put their input in. Thanks.
Thank you. Emily.
Hi there, my name's Emily Rothwell. I live on Park Street in District 4. And I'd like to just echo what Shelby is saying. I attended some of the Public Safety meetings, I attended the last city council meeting. I also interpreted based on the discussion and the notes that this would be coming up for a topic not tonight. And I'm disappointed that I'm not prepared to take on this conversation and ask important questions. I appreciate that I hear the councillors expressing care and concern about the constituents and the, the public of East Hampton having our voices heard and our opinions shared on this topic. And I feel like this confusion about the schedule and when this would be discussed has limited that opportunity to give insight tonight. So I request also that this be postponed for a later time. Thank you.
Julie. Julie.
Hi, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I did it again. Hi, no, actually, I just wanted to thank all the councillors for the effort in this. I believe that they were actually going to be voting on it tonight. I've been following the meetings as well. And my understanding was that, yes, they would be voting on it tonight. So I think that they should move forward with that. Also, I just kind of wanted to reemphasize what Desiree was talking about in regards to eliminating other people's thoughts on how the community could feel on this report, if they're related to an officer, if they're living in, within the town. Because really, all voices do matter. And I also wanted to ask, well, I can't ask a question, but I just wanted to make a statement on the players, the mayor's pledge report, because I've read it a good couple of times. And the majority of the report, especially in the survey, were very positive interactions with our East Hampton PD. But when I'm reading the final report that is being presented, I don't see very much of that in there. And I don't know if you're only focusing on improvements and not showing the whole 360. I don't understand that because I always feel like if you're going to give a picture, you give the entire picture. You don't just give partial because people tend to gravitate always towards the negative. And we want to show a full picture. It's kind of like in the introductory that you guys put on here. I had questioned that introductory a little bit because on the introductory, first the statement says it was also became clear that there's not enough data and sharing of data to have substantive conversations around areas of bias, police oversight, or policy changes. But then in the following one, in the introductory, it said, "The city of East Hampton has the opportunity to be proactive in working with our police department to create more transparency around data practices and oversight in an effort to build trust with the committee and work towards eliminating bias." Well, when you put eliminating bias, that perceives that you found bias within our police department. And now that is not the case. So I think that that statement portrays the men and women of East Hampton PD are biased and that paints an untrue representation of our police department. And I think that should be changed. So thank you for letting me speak. And again, I really appreciate everybody's effort in this and I thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And back to Shelby and Donovan.
Hi, good evening. It's Donovan Lee this time, Resident Award 4 as well. I just wanted to echo the people that are saying that the agenda for tonight was, you know, a little bit convoluted and not super easy to understand and that, you know, members of the community and people that try and work together in the community all came to a consensus that this wasn't happening according to the wording. So it, it seems, you know, a little difficult to understand the way that it was put up, put forward right now. So I just want to echo what everyone else is saying that, you know, we would like a chance for everyone in the community to prepare themselves and know exactly what's going to happen during the meeting so they can, you know, have their remarks ready. I know I have some remarks that I'm not ready to make tonight because I was not prepared for this vote to go down tonight. So, you know, I just wanted to say that. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. I feel like we need to clarify the notification to the public about what goes on in a city council meeting. The agenda clearly states that we're going to have. A public hearing around the mayor's pledge. It clearly states that in the agenda. And so I'm not really clear, if you're focusing on the dates, that's probably not what you should be focusing on. You should be focusing on the agenda that comes out on Thursday. That's all I'm going to say. I guess I get that everyone misinterpreted that. But going forward, whatever is in that box on the city council agenda. Those are the public hearings where all of these big things get discussed appropriation ordinances and things of this nature. So I I'm not sure where the misinformation came from, but the agenda is the Bible, and that is what you need to focus on. The minutes are really just kind of what we talked about. But after the meeting, we can add things to the agenda that we don't talk about during the meeting. And then that would show up on the packet and then on and on we go. But anyway. I just wanted to clarify that. I may have made it more confusing. Anyway, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I think you was clear. And you was clear because I I just want to say something, I want to clarify something. We extended ninety day because I asked, because if I didn't, if we didn't extend, it will expire a couple of days ago. And that's what the reason we extended ninety days. I think the agenda was was clear. There was only for that, including the minutes. I just take a look at the minutes again. And the minute was clear that we only vote to extend the the report. But we said, we scheduled a public hearing for tonight and everything was pretty clear. But that doesn't mean that I'm open to to move it to the next meeting and vote to the next meeting. But if everybody think and believes that the report is, is, is the report that we're going to finish. And we're going to send it to the to the mayor, I'm I'm ready to vote today too.
Counselor Riss.
I actually feel that we should extend it, and I say this because I wanted Chief Alberti to make an at length statement regarding this. It's his department we're talking about, and he's not here. I was already going to ask that we continue this public hearing to the next meeting anyway. The other side of this, I I realize that we all are aware that when something is set for public hearing. We're going to vote on it, but maybe we can make that clear. I want to think about that. I'm always looking to make things a little more transparent, a little more readily available to the public. So if we're going to vote on something, and some of the times we vote on things that aren't in the public hearing. So I want to look at that and maybe look at rules that might help us. With that regard, because. Because a lot of people know how we process, doesn't mean that everybody does. But I was going to ask for an extension anyway, because the chief isn't here, and I'd like the chief to be able to do that.
Yep, I agree. Counselor Kuzinski.
Madam President, I would certainly be so inclined to consider seriously a reason to. Take this up at another meeting. I think there's plenty of time. There's nothing that the the mayor is saying this is urgent. We have to deal with it this day, or we're going to lose a million dollars of state or federal funds. Which I I think we've heard that kind of talk before, that we do something immediately. I think this is something we all want to work together with the mayor and with the public and to have full transparency. I would appreciate if somebody would please pull up the screen of the agenda. I I was, is that possible, Counselor Riss? Reason, the reason is is illustrative, and I think the public, since we're discussing this so much, really needs. To clarify this, and if the screen could go up and we could go to page, to the agenda page. Just to go on the face page of the agenda, if you might, for a moment. On the face page of the agenda, and if you scroll down to the bottom. There is a section entitled Public Hearings. That is where the public hearings are clearly set and laid out. With the time of the public hearings. If you could scroll down to the next page, please.
We're getting a little education in in city council agenda.
Right there. I I I think it's really important to note that there are stars or asterisks. Next to the items that were on the agenda that are now part of the public hearing. So I think it becomes very clear that something is going to be discussed in a public hearing. There are also dates at the end, and those dates are for us to keep track, to bring things, to be, bring items back to the full council. That there was a a rule that was passed where you just can't keep something in committee forever. That every ninety days or whatever date is set by the council, we bring items back. So I think it's important to note just what kind of information the public should be looking for in terms of how to to predict whether an item. Could be voted on and whether it's scheduled to absolutely be discussed at a particular meeting. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. That was really helpful. Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. So I guess I my thing is, it sounds like there's a lot of people from the community. Who misunderstood the agenda and want to participate and can't or are not prepared to. And on that alone, I'm fine with continuing this so long as the sense that I get. So so my understanding, based on my previous thing, is that since most of these are executive items that do not actually require our. Approval, if like a great opportunity to move forward on one of these happens in the next two weeks. Our continuing this meeting is not going to preclude the mayor from doing something that could be a positive step for the community. And as long as I've heard that, I am inclined to continue it.
Mayor, you you have your hand up?
Can you not see me peg?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I don't. I'm sorry. Hold on, Mayor. Counselor Derby.
I I think my hand blends into my background.
It does, you're right.
Wait, why is she skipping over me? Anyway, so I just wanted to say that, you know, I I too am fine with continuing this. I think that that's great. And I and I want to, you know, just acknowledge the the rest of our committee as we've worked on this. Because, you know, as a lot of you might be aware, that this is not a a subject that requires a public hearing. This was something that we chose to do as a public hearing, you know, but could have just been a report out of committee. But we understood the levity and the and the importance of this. So I, you know, and I and I want to just, you know, give Omar a nod to that. Because I think it is important to be able to have the public's input on this, which is why I think it's important for us to be able to, you know, let as many people weigh in on this as possible. And also have more time to digest it, because we did work really hard on it. And, you know, and I think it is a good amalgamation of priorities. So, you know, I I'm completely in support of of extending this out.
Okay, great. Mayor.
I realize I'm hearing the conversation where not, I just want to clarify. One, Counselor Kuzinski is correct. There's not a loss of of dollars. If there's, you know, a vote or or not, or unacceptance of it. But that said, you know. I feel the urgency of this review and the urgency of the report has has taken a meandering point. A meandering path to this point. I want to be very respectful to public comment and also the recommendations by city council. But there are some thing. From the recommendation report. So I I don't want to mislead anyone that I think the public conversation. You know, obviously should continue both in the original. For original, original remarks and also remarks on the mayor pledge report and the recommendations. I am grateful for the public safety committee and Counselor Gomez in particular saying yes to me. When I asked, he did not have to, and I I do want to echo the comments. I I asked and he agreed, as did the other two members, to take this on because I was worried about lack of public con. Public comment on the the report and the process. There were public hearings during the mayor pledge proceedings as well as surveys. And then three public hearings and public safety. And I'm not trying to weigh in about voting or not. But I do feel like I have a lot of information that I'm going to kind, I'm starting to sift through. And the vote or acceptance of this report is one that is. Appreciated, but. Is is not attached to me going forward with the mayor pledge and and putting a recommendation before. So next steps is, you know, I'm going to start putting together the recommendations into an implementation and implementation plan. People will see that some things are already starting to happen and actually happen from, you know, feedback we got since June third. So always welcome to have the conversation. And and again, this will go back to my. My undo race, undoing racism workshop that that I attended. And there's no quick fix. It's not going to happen overnight, and this conversation shouldn't by no means stop. Or think it has an urgency to end. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Riss.
I appreciate what the mayor said, and there's nothing to preclude the mayor from acting concurrently with what we're doing. But we are the forum for the public to make comment, and we need to address that and not vote on this. And sending it to the mayor. That doesn't mean the mayor can't implement anything she feels she wants to from the pledge as well as from our recommendations. So I I don't think it inhibits the mayor from moving forward if we wait for the public to weigh in further. So I'd like to make a motion if it's appropriate to continue this public hearing, Madam President.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on the mayor's pledge report. Any further discussion? Counselor Zer.
Sorry, I apologize. I didn't use the raise hand feature, President Coniff. But just to clarify too, as the council remembers, we didn't, this didn't have to even be a public hearing. The purpose of this, and I think rightfully so, was to create transparency and engagement. So. I think it's good that we're continuing this. We can get all the public input. I just wanted to remember, remind people that on the record that initially, this could have just been discussed. In a committee report. So the purpose for this was better community engagement. And so continuing this, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Any further discussion? Barbara.
I just have one clarification. Are you continuing it to a date in particular?
The next meeting. I apologize.
Pick one, Barb, whichever one you like.
Okay, Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Did we lose her?
Okay.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
I.
Salem Derby.
I.
Omar Gomez.
I.
J P Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsay, are you there? Okay.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Motion passes. Okay, so we will, we will move that to ten twenty to allow for additional public speak. And I'll take a motion to close a public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion, second to close public hearings. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Well, Lindsay, are you there? Okay, Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
I.
Salem Derby.
I.
Omar Gomez.
I.
J P Kuzinski.
I.
Tom Peak.
I.
Dan Rist.
I.
Okay, motion passes. All right, before we continue, does anybody need a break? Okay. We did communication from elected officials. Any correspondence? I have none. Any, anything you'd like to say, Counselor Riss?
To thank everybody. It was a good month for me. I did want to tell you that. As much as I wanted to take a break, the. State legislature finally decided to review our charter changes. Of course, it was in September, September fourteenth, and Representative Carey and I attended the meeting. And I spoke to what was going on in our charter review. We may actually see that pass the legislature before this term ends. Which is amazing considering how long it's taken. But I wanted you to know that Representative Carey and myself, we made some progress. And I'm just reporting to the council that hopefully we see these changes. It'd be great if they were made before the new terms begin, because the charter, as you all know, dictates. How we proceed in the city. It'd be nice to have it done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and welcome back, Counselor Riss. We missed you. So I'm glad you're back. I missed you for sure. I made a lot of mistakes two weeks ago. Mayor Communications, Mayor LaChapelle.
Um, yes, I just have one quick. So we had. Undoing racism training, our second. Our second workshop, members of the community attended, as well as leadership in the city and city employees. I will be just publishing a quick press release about who attended and what the workshops are about. But I I wanted to let folks know that that was our rounds have completed. The workshop is eighteen hours long over three days, and I appreciate the leadership in the city attending and attentive. It was certainly very deep and the beginning of a long journey. So thank you to the city employees and leadership that attended, as well as the members of the community. And I you'll, I will have a written report shortly after Columbus Day. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, reports of standing committees. We will begin with finance. Counselor Riss.
Counselor Kuzinski had.
I'm sorry, I always forget to do that. Does anyone have any questions of the mayor? Counselor Kuzinski.
Thank you, Madam President and Counselor Riss. I just wanted to thank the mayor wholeheartedly and from the bottom of my heart for the undoing racism. Program. I I think that the process is beginning for our community. It is a long process, and I believe we're making the right steps by having the three day seminar. That she has proposed for the city. So I appreciate the last session, and I know there was a session earlier. So I look forward to the groups getting together to meet, to discuss, and continue the work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor, and thank you for attending. The hope would be that we would offer the eighteen hour workshop. Again, to employees, but to members of the community, members of the faith community, and also school. Staff as well as students above the age of sixteen. So and we'll get the word out on on that as soon as we figure out time and booking and and cost. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Gomez. Oh, sorry. Did you have something?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor.
It's not related to this, but I would like to just say something quick after Counselor Gomez.
Counselor Gomez, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo Counselor Kuzinski's words. I participate in those eighteen hours and. Being a Deo de Sai, as a Latino, I I learn a lot too. I get hit a few times of my reality, of my really reality. There's some time I pretend not to see. Was tough, and I. Ask, I'm asking you guys who didn't participate. And whoever are going to get offered to take this training, please take it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Gomez. Okay, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor, for those comments, and I I agree, we've all committed to do some really tough work. And while it sounds trite and pithy, I don't put myself in anybody else's shoes, but if we're going to do the work, eighteen hours is nothing to what. Black, Brown, AAPI. Folks have experienced their entire life, so. Somewhat related. So we had, we hosted the Secretary Michael Canel. somewhat related. So we had, we hosted the Secretary Michael Caneli and under Secretary Jennifer Maddox from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development about housing, affordable housing in the city of East Hampton, walked through some different areas of the city, went into Pleasant Green and New City about just general employment, general improvements, as well as the three schools that will be surplus. We, we had really, you know, substantive conversations. It was a very fast hour and a half. It went from city space and going after that bond money to parking, to housing, types of housing. We'll have a follow-up meeting with the CEO of Mass Development, Dan Rivera, and some of his folks on Friday around small business and housing and how to do that together as well. Community Economic Development and Assistance Corporation came along, as did Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So Friday is CEO Rivera, who, former mayor of Lawrence, and when he was at Lawrence, in Lawrence, he redeveloped a million, one mil of a million square feet with a variety of housing and small businesses, public services. So really looking forward to get him into the city, take a look. And then later in October, to wrap up the state tour and the big push as they go into budget will be Mass Housing Secretary Crystal, no, Mass Housing CEO Crystal Cornege, who has done some really awesome work out in Lawrence and Lowell around housing for first-time homebuyer and opening up a housing market that's very tough. So I, I wanted to share that, and I think it is very noteworthy that of all the planning and feasibility studies we've done, whether it's the art visioning, or see Council on Aging, or Council on Disability, when we're, we're talking about this, like, number one, number one, number one is housing, housing for everyone. So we're making steps, and I, I feel that this work we've just talked about is a big part of that too. It's all interconnected. So with that, Madam President, I am done for real. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Anyone else have a question of the mayor? All right. Now we will move on to reports of standing committees. Finance, Counselor Rist.
I, I will ask that the council please accept Counselor Gomez, who attended the last finance committee meeting. I was not able to attend that, and he would make a report, and then I will come back to do the new business.
Okay.
Counselor Gomez, thank you so much for doing my work for me.
Thank you for being back, and I hope, I was hoping everybody saying no, so that way you have to do the whole report. But I guess I'm, and I have to do it. So I want to start saying that we schedule a meeting for October 12th, 5:00 PM.
October 13th.
13, I'm sorry, 13, 13. You're right. You see, that's why, that's why you're back. I don't want to make a motion to set up a public hearing for October 20th, I say 15th, for the following things, request to amend Chapter 7, Section 7, dash 17, Exhibit A, Classification of Employee by adding in a new position, Community Social Worker at Grade F. I'm going to add all of them, so I'm going to, as a one motion. Amendment to Chapter 7, Section 7, 17, Exhibit, Exhibit A, Classification of Employment by changing the pay rate grade for the position of the Public Health Nurse from Grade A to Grade F, and to amend Chapter 7, Section 7, 17, Exhibit 7, Exhibit A by adding in the position on Information Technology Director at Grade H.
Second.
Motion, second to set a public hearing for the aforementioned city ordinance amendments. Any further discussion? Barbara.
And that was for October 20th, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just checking. Okay, Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
I.
Salem Derby.
I.
Omar Gomez.
I.
JP Kuzinski.
I.
Tom Peak. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Dan Rist.
I.
And Lindsay, is Lindsay?
She's gone.
Okay, all right.
Okay, motion passes.
Counselor Rist, I think it's all yours now.
I would like you to deal with the, I don't think it needed a public hearing, but the change in scope.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I forgot about that.
Yeah, because although I know about it because of I was involved at the CPA level, Burns Maxi's here and Jamie's here.
I do have the information here. Thank you, Counselor Rist. I long line a lot of stuff. I thought I forgot about it. Thank you for reminding me that. Yes, we do have a request to change the scope of the some funding. We, in 2017, we approved some money to do some work in, and at the second floor, if that's my understanding. But we didn't, they didn't do it. They didn't use the money, but they didn't got the money because CPA still have the money. And what we're going to do is only going to change the scope of, instead of be working at the second floor, now they're going to do something on the first floor. And they need our approval for, for that. That's correct. Jamie?
Yes, that's correct. They did do the work partly. The original funding was $207,000 funding appropriation from the council to be matched one-to-one with a grant from the state. The state only awarded $135,000 roughly, so the remaining $70,000 was put into a set-aside account for the second-floor project for when, when one-to-one matching funds were found by City Space, they could access the remaining funds for related work to the project. There were a couple instances where the, they needed to change architectural plans because of comments from like Mass Historical Commission, or they need to do additional exploratory work in the ceiling. So it's related to that project, and those, those requests were approved. This is a new request to change the scope because their work now is, as you said, on the first floor and the tower of the building and outside of the scope of what the second-floor project was.
And if this, my understanding, this is to meet the fire and building codes, right?
Correct.
And some paint.
Correct. There was, and Burns is here, the president of City Space, can explain further, but it was fire and building code-related activities to bring the flywheel space up to code as well as some painting in that space and on the, one of the towers in the Old Town Hall.
Burns, you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd like to thank Jamie Webb for helping us through this process of re-appropriating these funds. You know, there was a question of how we could go about this because of the impacts from losing a tenant in the Old Town Hall of the city-owned building. We lost a significant amount of funding, and so we decided to, City Space decided to manage the first-floor space, and in order to do that, some work needed to be done. Also during 2020, we had to maintain the historically-owned building, and we did so by taking funds from our reserves, and with that loss of a tenant, that disrupted our funding model. So so we're coming to the CPA to request some of the reappropriation of those funds in order to push the project forward so that we can get back on track, and we see this as a direct correlation between the first floor and the second-floor capital campaign.
Okay, Counselor Rist.
I just wanted to add that the CPA, I was there at the CPA meeting, and we discussed this, and the CPA did approve this. It is part of the CPA's requirements that if a project needed to change the scope of that project, they, in any way, the funding and how they're using it, they have to come back to the CPA for approval. And I requested that the council approve it, and this is unusual in that the council approved this original recommendation for, of $207,000 for the second floor. So if we're going to go to the first floor, for, it's not just a matter of us informing you, I think it's important for the council to vote on it. So that's why it's on the agenda. And I hope you will support it. I think what they're trying to do with flywheel is excellent.
Any other, is that you, Mayor, raising your hand?
Yes, I was trying to use technology. So I, I would just like to express support for what's before the council now. I think we, we all know well that business and well-laid plans, people's lives change, and we're all in a different place than we ever expected, and to give this fluidity and shift to City Space is very important. They were very prominent today in the conversations with the secretary and the impact, even though I know the impact, to listen to it in the presentation and the questions that were asked, the impact is even deeper than, it, it kind of brought me back to what, what this project means to East Hampton. So I, I would, I would encourage the council to vote in favor. Thank you.
Madam President.
Counselor Rist.
I just wanted to remind me, Jamie, the amount of money that we're, we approved. It's not on the agenda, and I just want to put that forward.
Yeah, so the, the request is for $13,219, which we matched one. It's actually, I think City Space is putting more into the project because there were some items that were not eligible for CPA expend, expenditures, but they will be matching it. Burns, I think it was like 20, 25,000 that you had said. So, but the city councils, but the city council's being asked to allow the scope change for $13,219.
It's all right, I can make that motion.
I have, I have the motion, but you can do it.
Oh, never mind.
Is, is your committee?
No, you have the motion, do it.
All right, I have, I move that the city council approved the request modification of the scope of the design funds appropriation in fiscal year 2017 for reimbursement to the city space for the architect, architect, architect fees to redesign the Old Town Hall first-floor space and to modify and building code and paint the first-floor space formerly occupied by flywheel.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the change in scope for the CPA commit, for the, okay, I've lost my place. For the Old Town Hall, wow. Any further discussion? Counselor Zerrit.
Okay, now my hands up.
I see that.
Just, just to chime into, in support of this, as Counselor Rist said, this project is potentially going to lead to a, creating a space on the second floor there that's going to be a hallmark of our city, and this new incorporation of the flywheel space makes total sense, and it's a great opportunity. So anything to support this project and continuing to make it feasible and viable in support of 100%, I mean, this, this reinvigorating the space is the future of East Hampton, I believe.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
I.
Omar Gomez.
I.
JP Kuzinski.
I.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
I.
Owen Zerrit.
Yep, yes.
Yep. Okay, motion passes. All right. I think there's new business, right, Counselor Rist?
Counselor Rist.
That's correct, and I will thank you, Counselor Gomez, for all your hard work for me. We have some, first of all, the meeting will take place on October 13th. Madam President, I will be asking for a public hearing for the $298,000 appropriation because of, I believe I heard the chief would like to get that done soon so that he can order two ambulances and save the city money. But I'll place the other two, since we still have a lot on the agenda, I'll place the other two public hearings after that. Does any but?
By after that, do you mean November 3rd?
First meeting in November, but I'd like to hear from the mayor if the planning department issue is something that needs to be done immediately. Is she still on? Probably not.
Mayor, are you still? There we go. Mayor, do you have, if we move the $97,000 question on the city planner's budget to November 3rd for a public hearing? Is that a problem?
No.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Then I'll, I'll make the first reading. Give me a second, I have to find it. I had it.
We've missed you, Dan.
Yeah, I need, I'm out of practice.
I know.
First reading of a supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $298,872 to be transferred from the cannabis stabilization account. $298,872 to be transferred to FY22 new ambulance, $298,872. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose. These funds will be used to purchase a new ambulance replaced at 2013 ambulance. I'm going to read all the supplements and then make motions. The second one is for a supplemental appropriation for the following appropriation, $97,000 to be transferred also from the cannabis stabilization account, to be transferred to A Planner Full-Time Regular, $34,000, B Planner Professional Services, $60,000, and C Planner PVPC Assessment, $3,000 for the following purposes, to fund approximately 40% of the city planner's salary for FY21 from cannabis stabilization rather than general fund correlating to cannabis-related activity. The replaced general funds will remain in the department to be used to fund the conservation agent position full-time. This, not a salary increase or raise. B to fund cannabis and general planning-related activities within the department, including but not limited to hiring consultants to evaluate cannabis impacts, hiring consultants for due diligence, and creation of design plans, and preparing for other studies as needed. And C to fund the city annual PVPC membership assessment to all communities for the region. The next is a building department. Excuse me, I got to find it again. Interdepartmental transfer for $6,000. The amount is requested for $6,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $6,000 to be transferred to the building EFT permanent position, $6,000. The amount requested will be for the following purpose, to fix the building department budget. Madam President, I make a motion to send these to the Finance Committee for review. After that vote, I will make separate motions for public hearings.
Second.
Motion, second to move the three appropriations to the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara, Counselor Kuzinski, oh, Counselor Kuzinski, let me remind you, you can only ask a question about moving it to the Finance Committee, not about the appropriations themselves. The motion is, do we want to move these to the committee?
So. I hear you. I just like to make a comment. I don't need to discuss it. I hope that there's further clarification in committee about the, to fix the building department, but
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, I was a little concerned about that proposal in the way it was worded.
Okay.
I strongly suggest you come to the meeting there, DJP.
Okay. Any, any, okay, so Barb.
Salem Derby.
I.
Omar Gomez.
I.
JP Kuzinski.
I.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
I.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
I.
I would like to, are we done? We're done.
Yep.
To set a public hearing, number one, for October 20th, for the $298,000 appropriation for the ambulance. And I don't know the date of the first meeting in November, but that date for the other two appropriations.
November 3rd.
November 3rd at 6:50. November third at six fifteen second.
Motion second to set public hearings for all three. First one is the two hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight seventy-two for ten twenty. The other two for November third. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Let's see here. It would be Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Wrist.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam President, that concludes.
No, no, it isn't, Dan.
Nope, one more.
What did I do?
The tax classification hearing.
Oh, and they want that November third, correct?
Yep, well, you can decide that.
Well, I think I'll just abide by what the assessors want. I'd like to make a motion that we have the public hearing for the tax classification on November third.
Second.
Motion second to set the tax classification hearing for November third. Any further discussion?
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Wrist.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
I think I'm concluded, Barbara.
You are.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, excellent. Okay, public safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question. Because I don't have a report, but I have, do I have a question because tonight they were supposed to do the ordinance review committee report. Lindsay's, Council Rothschild is not here. And I don't know if, because we're supposed to move a few things for different committees. And this was to move a few things to the Public Safety Committee. Do you want me to make the motion and move that tonight, or you want to hold there until she can do the report?
Are you asking if we're gonna move her final report to a public hearing?
Part, no, to the public safety, because is, the, the report, she recommend a few changes. Some of them they're going to ordinance and some of them they're going to probably be probably safety. And that my question, if you want to do those, you want to send that, yeah, Council Peak probably have the answer for that.
My understanding, and Lindsay reached out to me briefly, Counsel Rothschild, I'm sorry, reached out to me briefly earlier today. Is that it's now all of our prerogatives to take the items, the recommendations from that report. And refine them into measures that, you know, live up to the standards of our rules. And introduce them to one committee or another. Very little of what's in there is actually written out right now in a way that's ready for prime times, so. I think, I, I don't, I, I didn't, my understanding was not that Counsel Rothschild had planned to. Introduce, you know, a dozen items to public safety and ordinance like all tonight. But really just to sort of introduce the report, which I said I would, I would do briefly in her stead. And that it's then on us to look it over and, and figure out how to refine that.
I'm okay with that.
You're muted, Peg.
So look it over individually and, and how, how do we do that without sending it to a committee to have a discussion about what we're gonna do with it?
Uh, well, I, I think I'm, I'm gonna, I, my, my plan, I thought, was to give a brief introduction to it. When we get to that section of the agenda and sort of discuss process there.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so are you, is that it for public safety then? Okay. Appointments, Lindsay's not here, was someone else going to move it? Okay, Counsel Kuzinski.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one appointment to move. For new business, if I may, at this time. That is, the mayor has recommended the appointment of. Sheera Simon to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with the term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. I would like to move that to the Appointments Committee.
Motion second to move the mayoral appointment to the Appointment Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Wrist.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
We also have a, a meeting to mention that it will be October thirteenth at four PM. That's a new time, I believe, four PM and October thirteenth, the Wednesday before the city council meeting. Where we will.
There's no city council that night. Oh, you're Wednesday before, I get you. Okay, so just FYI, finance starts at five.
I apologize, before the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, so it starts at five, yours will be less than an hour?
We will be less than an hour.
Okay. All right.
That's October thirteenth at four PM.
Gotcha.
And that will, will, we will, we will discuss an appointment to the zoning board of appeals, the council on aging director. The building commissioner and a member of the agricultural committee.
Okay.
That concludes the report.
Thank you. Ordinance.
Thank you, Madam President. Ordinance met on September twenty-eighth. And we had a, a really interesting meeting with the EDIC coming to discuss some thoughts they had on a, a potential ordinance. About empty storefronts, something, some things that they had found from other communities and other cities that they had done to kind of mitigate. How many empty storefronts were just being left to fester and I would say that, you know, stay on the lookout. I imagine that there will be an ordinance coming soon to a neighborhood near you. We also did discuss some plastic straws issues and it was really interesting. We had a, a few guests come and, and discuss that with us. Always great to have people come and, and talk about, you know, what could be mundane things and make them exciting. And so we are going to be, I imagine, bringing that forward again in the near future. And in that vein, I will say that we are meeting next Tuesday, October twelfth at seven PM. So if you're interested in, in coming and, and discussing any of the things on our agenda, please join us. And I don't think I need to extend anything, so I will say thus concludes.
You have no new business? That's shocking.
It is.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Derby. Property, Counselors there.
Thank you, President Coniff. It looks like we have an item, we have no old business or continuing business. We do have a new piece of business regarding an easement off of Pace and Avenue. That I need to read up on more, but for now, I would like to make a motion, sorry, I ended up in the wrong part of the agenda. I apologize scrolling up. To an agenda near you. Here we are, at this time, I would like to make a motion to move the request for electric utility easements relative to Tower at thirty-two Pace and Avenue. To the Property Committee.
Second.
Motion second to move the easement tower thing to the Property Committee. Any further discussion? What he said? Okay, Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Wrist.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
And, boy, no rest for the weary. I guess I'll set a public hearing for that item. For the first meeting in November, I think, based on everything else I'm hearing, if that, if that seems to be commensurate with the feeling.
That doesn't need a public hearing.
No? Okay, then.
Even better.
Yeah, indeed, exactly. Okay, so I, I, I'll withdraw that, that, that motion then. We'll find a time to meet and present this as part of our regular committee discussion and thus concludes.
Thank you. Rules and government relations, Counsel Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. Rules has not met since our last meeting. We're going to meet tomorrow. And we're gonna be meeting to discuss reprecincting. And Barb has made it very clear that if you have any thoughts on this at all, you need to be at that meeting. In fact, that meeting should have already been earlier, but there was some confusion and people tripped over each other and. I don't know exactly how that went down, but point is, you gotta be there or. You know, it's gonna be way, way, way too late to really have any feelings about that. Definitely, if you have any feelings at all about where the precincts are, you gotta be there tomorrow.
We're voting on it on the twentieth. We're voting on it on the twentieth.
Do you have any questions on the twentieth? I'm just gonna be like quiet. You should have been here out there at that meeting. That's, that's what I'm gonna say. I mean, you don't have to listen, but I have no, but that's, that's how I feel. That's how Barb feels too.
Yes.
Okay, so that, I guess, is, oh, and it looks like we need to move the warrant for the November second city election. Or can we just vote on that here?
Just vote on it.
All right, then. I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for the November second city election.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the warrant for the election on November second. Any further discussion? Barbara.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Wrist.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass.
And thus concludes.
Thank you.
Tom.
Yes.
What about that resolution? Were you gonna make comment on that?
The resolution, I was thinking of moving it forward. I noticed that two people were out and just getting the sense that that might be sort of a close vote. I thought I'd just wait until the next meeting.
That's what I meant, that you want to talk before.
Sure, yes, then that is what I, yes, that was the initial plan. And when I realized there was gonna be some absences, you know, th- those votes always get kind of weird when there's more than one person missing, so I just thought I'd. We, we can discuss that at the next one.
Okay, sounds good. Ad hoc committees, anything ranked choice voting, Counsel Peak?
Yes, we mailers are gonna go out tomorrow, so you can find those in your mailbox. They're going out to all the addresses in town through some nifty direct mailing things that one of our members came up with. They will have a link on there for Spanish speakers to access that same information on the city website. As well as some information about, you know, voting by mail and registering to vote and all of that. But it, and, and a link to some more information about ranked choice voting, so those are going out tomorrow. We, we spent a lot of time sort of workshop in those, we feel pretty good about them.
Great, thank you. Anything, Counsel Kuzinski on senior tax work off?
Only that it's exciting to say that there are ten people working in the senior tax work off program or about to start shortly. So again, thank you to the mayor and to everyone else for this program getting off the ground. And we look forward to it proceeding throughout the, the remainder of the year.
And is it your intent, Counsel Kuzinski, that when this expires on twelve thirty-one, that that will be the end of that committee as it currently was concocted?
I'm not sure whether we will make that recommendation.
Not every member will still be here.
That is correct.
Just saying.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, ordinance review committee, who was gonna speak to this? Counsel Peak?
I'll do my best. I'm not insanely prepared, but I got a, a, a text from Counsel Rothschild. So, yeah, in short, the committee voted unanimously to, to approve a report, which is in. The, the packet. The report, I, I hope you've all had a chance to read. I, I don't feel like at this hour, it probably makes a lot of sense for me to read it point by point, but it's, it's there for all of us. Broadly went through, most of the recommendations were fairly minor, but I think that some of them, you know, could be important. You know, again, the way that this was set up was to be an advisory group to review the ordinance, the, the city ordinances for potential problems. There was never an attempt to draft our own replacement language. So the challenge then that's before all of us is to look at the report and identify some things that. You care about. And draft some replacement language, you know, like, you know, there, there's, there's cases where this could be very, very simple fixes. There's some that could be a bit more complex. But, you know, there's not a thought that we need to address all of this at once, but that we should sort, that, that now that the report's there, there's a jumping off point to identify. You know, some areas where the various committees can get to work. There was a thought about whether or not we wanted to do anything with the zoning. And the, the general thought was that there might someday, there might be a, a need for a committee to do that someday, that committee would probably need a different set of. Technical skills, but in the meantime, that the committee in our report. Very strongly supported the housing production plan as a clear example of some places where our zoning could be updated. To, you know, make a city that's more inclusive and easy for, you know, larger group of people to live in. And other than that, I, I, I would just say, on behalf of Counsel Rothschild and also on behalf of myself, and I'm sure everyone else. Just thanks to all the community volunteers who showed up and put in a lot of work reading very dense documents. And, and, and the thanks to the police department for sending folks to. You know, sit in our, our meetings and give some context about how or if these various ordinances are enforced. And, yeah, I, I just, I really, I'm, I'm pretty proud of the report that we came up with and I really encourage everyone to give it a good, close look.
So I have a question. So I'm, I'm still not clear on how individually we go through this. I would rather it be a little, I, I feel like. This should go to ordinance and then that's where the conversation around whether these are viable ordinances changes would be born. It sounds like what you're saying is all nine of us just go away, look at these, come back and say, hey, I don't like one, three and seven, but I like two, nine and eight, I like. I feel like it needs to be in a committee and so I'm, I'm not clear on where the next steps are.
Well, I mean, so I thought of it sort of like the housing production plan, right, in that the housing production plan has lots of different suggestions in it, but a counselor needs to initiate every one of them. Um, I, I hear what you're saying and, and I think that I, I'm like.
So this could die a slow death if none of us decided any of these were worth looking at. We would just throw it in the trash and it would never come up again.
Well, I hope we don't. I intend to do.
Right, but I'm saying that could happen.
Just like the housing production plan in two thousand and seven or whatever, yeah, absolutely. But, 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 yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm open to having a, a broader discussion about other ways that, that we do that, but that was sort of the idea is that. This comes to the council as an advisory document. And then the council, the counselors decide how to proceed with these various recommendations.
Counsel Wrist.
I was gonna suggest that we send the committee report to ordinance. The ordinance committee would discern which ordinances might go to public safety and which they would take up. But I agree with Counsel Coniff, I don't want it to die. If it's in committee, something happens. And I think if, and I'd like Salem to chime in here, all, all that. The ordinance committee is gonna do is decide which ordinances they want to take up and change. And develop new language for, and those that might be related to public safety, they would recommend to send to public safety. Unless Counsel Gomez already knows which ones he wants, but they, I, I absolutely feel they need to go to committee tonight in order that they don't die. It is, it's, it's a lot of work that this committee's done and I really appreciate that committee and especially Counsel Rothschild. And I don't want us not to act on them in some way, so if they're not in committee. We always get busy and I think they will die, so I'm gonna make that motion if, if anybody else doesn't.
Counsel Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. The report that we have at the, at the package has some recommendation, the recommendations, they say propose, propose actions, right? And one of the proposed actions is review and revision by the ordinance committee. And then they split it into groups of recommendations. and then they split it in two groups of recommendation. One of the recommendation is uh referred to the ordinance committee to review and re, review, revision, and the second one is to the public safety, but I'm open to send everybody, everything to the other uh committee, and they can decide if the uh public safety part, part, uh, part of the report, they should take care of it, take care of it instead of send it to the public safety, but I think the, the reports already say where to send it.
Councilor Zerrit?
Uh, I'm in agreement with uh you and Councilor Rist, and I, and I didn't see that, that yellow um text until Councilor Gomez just pointed it out, so it looks like some of the scrutiny as to where to send it uh has been done. Uh, and so I would, I would, I would trust the review of the ordinance review committee to parse out what goes where. I do agree wholeheartedly both with you, Councilor Coniff, and uh, Councilor Rist, whoever else, so that, that this should go to the committee. This represents a year's worth of work, and um, it deserves some sort of action. Um, and it looks like s- some of that work has been done for us, probably per review of city council rules as to what goes where, so I'm in favor of, of motions to send them to those two committees. Um, as Councilor uh Gomez indicated, it's already delineated.
Councilor Derby?
You might hear my dog barking in the background, but I'm fine with it coming uh to ordinance, and I, I don't think we have a rule that says we can't send uh one item to two uh committees concurrently, so, you know, maybe we can look at sending it to both committees, and we each take the piece that is relevant to us. You know, I think that's a, that's an easy way to go, but I'm, I'm happy to.
And you get, and, you know, conceivably, you could have a joint meeting uh of both committees and parse it out that way.
That would be a quorum of the council.
And I was just about to say.
Well, I'm on both committees.
But.
I'm, I'm the linchpin there, so like, I, I'm, I'm on both committees, so there you go.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to send the, the report.
Hold on, Councilor Gomez, did you have another comment you wanted me? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to send the report to both the public safety and the ordinance committees, so that they may develop actionable ordinance language.
I'll second that.
Motion is second to send the ordinance review committee final report to both the public safety committee and the ordinance committee. Any further discussion? Bye. Uh, Councilor Zerrit.
Wait.
Barb, sorry.
I, I think I, I, sorry, I zoned out during that last part. So are you saying that it's gonna be a joint hearing or joint?
We're just sending it to both committees. What you do after that's entirely up to you.
Okay, are we sending the parts that were recommended to each committee, or they're?
Both report.
Both reports.
As they are. You guys can duke it out.
Okay, great.
All right.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Motion passes. I think we're done. We've done all of the business. I'll take a motion, right, Barb? Anything you're missing? Okay.
I moved.
What did you say, Sam?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
They say second.
All right, motion is second. Barbara?
Uh, Dan Rist.
Yes.
Owen Zerrit.
Mm-hmm.
Peg Coniff.
Yep.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Yes.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Tom Peak.
Aye.
All right.
All tomorrow night.
Said what?
We'll see you all tomorrow night.
Oh, yes. Bye, Barbara.
See you tomorrow night.
Bye, everyone.
If not, uh, for the holiday, indigenous peoples' day.